Welcome everyone to the June tenth, twenty twenty five special session and work session of the Mayor City Council meetings now called to order. First up, I would like a motion to go into special session. So let me get a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Imposed? Okay, special session. I would like to have a a motion for a resolution approval for the city of Hagerstown to become a participating jurisdiction for the home investment partnerships program. So move.
Thank you.
There you go. You got a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now into work session. First up, we have some guests here with us today. Everyone from the I were a mayor, I would essay contest, which was statewide. And Herman Elementary has five kids. Three of them are from are semifinalists of the Maryland Municipal League. And the first three of those, I'm gonna call you up individually, each one. And I'd like you to come up to the podium and go ahead and read your essay. And you'll get your special recognition. And then after all five of you are done, we're gonna have a picture up here with myself and all five, and then you can take your seat. First up is Rena Joy Perry. Come on up.
Come on up here.
One up there.
Come on up here.
There you go.
You can have a seat here.
Okay. And if you go to the back of the room here. My friends are alone.
If I were mayor, there would be a tradition of having a fun ceremony celebrating the history of Hagerstown. So then, so that I can bring everyone together as a community. I would build more parks for people. I would also work hard and call council meetings to discuss making budgets to donate and help people who are poor and homeless and provide better shelters. Then I would fight for lower taxes on things to make goods more affordable. I would talk to my community about their suggestions or concerns to keep it in mind. I would also make changes so people felt comfortable and welcome, especially if it's their first time in Hagerstown. I'd have meetings to discuss if we should use our budget to build nice community centers where people could go to be social and make friends in their community. I would build donation centers which would fund free foods and drinks for homeless people, shelters, churches, orphanage, and in underprivileged areas. I would call on my community to listen to what people have to say and approve or disapprove politely depending on what they prefer. I would also create more chances to be a leader in the Hagerstown community. I would renovate or remove abandoned buildings and have votes in the community on what we would put in their place. Lastly, I would have recycling parties where everyone would work together to keep our community parks clean of litter. So that is why if I were mayor in Hagerstown, these these things would be good for building a greater community for future generations.
All right. Next up is Oliver Dobbins. Oliver Dobbins not here? Okay. Third one from semifinalist of the Maryland Municipal League is Robbie LeWolff. Did I say that correctly? You don't have to bend over to the microphone because this thing picks it up.
If I were mayor, I'd work very hard to make the city a great place to live and enjoy. I would listen to the concerns of citizens of this very important town of Hagerstown with care and respect. I would make Hagerstown a better town by adding more entertainment venues where people can gather and have fun with their families. Add more hotels so people who are coming to watch Hagerstown flying boxcars can stay at a hotel. Hagerstown's very own baseball team will have a place to stay. I will, I would also add more nursing homes to take care of the elderly people in our community. Hagerstown does not have a lot of parks and fishing spots, so this would be something I would will think about adding to our community. To make the citizens of this community involved in what what's going on goes on in this the community, I would hold regular meetings where they can come and share ideas that they think will make the community better, better. As mayor, I will then make sure that the good ideas that come out of the meeting are chosen. With all these community features, the citizens of Hagerstown can have a lot of places to get together, spend time and enjoy with their families. Citizens of Hagerstown will feel loved by their community if they have places to go outside of their houses. It would be a pleasure to be the mayor of this wonderful town, and I would not only be the mayor of Hagerstown, but the best mayor yet.
Next up is Cameron McCarty. Yes, I do. See, I did my homework. There you go.
Hi, I'm Cameron McCarty. If I were mayor, I would make sure Hagerstown is better for the future. The first thing I'll do is have a pick up trash day where at least everyone has to pick five pieces of trash so it does not get in drains near the road and then go into the Chesapeake Bay. To also make Hagerstown better, I would want more homeless shelters, and I would tear down old abandoned buildings and rebuild them to make them homeless shelters. I would see what budget I had for the homeless shelter. For the homeless shelter, I would have people donate drinks and snacks and make affordable foods. We want them to improve their situation, but we don't want to give them everything. So we would have them for one month and show them tons of places that are hiring so they can have a job and have a good life. To make sure people feel like they're part of the community, I would have a gathering every month to see if people wanted to add anything else for the community or just so people can feel included. And I would have a big park and have a painting place with famous work and people that have work. And people could eat there and make friends and get along. The main goal is to make sure everyone feels included and feel like they're a part of the community and make more homeless shelters. The big goal is to make Hagerstown is great. That is why I should be mayor.
Next up is Alexander Vega Tarver. He checks. Okay.
If I were mayor, I would always make sure to help to I would always make sure to always let people have a chance to be able to do amazing things they want to be able to do. People need their chance. If I were mayor, I would always be available. When they see a problem, I would make sure this problem is taken into account. This is what I would I would do as mayor. Hagerstown is a beautiful place, but many people get injured. We need more focus on healthcare. I would, as mayor, make good investments to make Hagerstown a better place for the future. I want there to be more entertainment places. Many people have to travel out of Hagerstown to get to places. So as a solution, we'll have many more places for people to go to. To make people feel at home, I would make sure, I would have to make sure that everyone is prohibited from being rude, disrespectful, unkind in any way. People must have a license for really anything, graffiti, possibly chalk. Parents who have a license can let kids use chalk. This is because some people might be uncomfortable with chalk all over the road or possibly on their property. Mayors around the world, how do you handle such a big responsibility? If I were mayor, I would let mayors take more breaks. Mayors are still people, but they asked for it and they decided to. However, even with the, even with this responsibility, I will be mayor. I will lead Hagerstown and make this an even better place. Vote for you, who you think is the best mayor. Good luck.
Any picture, ma'am?
Yeah. Yeah, on prayer.
There he is.
You want straight here?
Yeah, let me see.
Yes, ma'am. That's the only one I had, Oliver Dobbins. Was the other one?
Here.
No, that's the only other one I have. Yeah, he's already up here. Oh, I have five.
Parker.
Who?
I think Parker.
Parker. Well, he, Parker, go ahead and come on up with us, though. No?
No, he has.
Oh, he has? Okay. We'll make sure you get your special recognition thing too, Pat. All right.
If I were mayor, I would make Hagerstown better for the future. I would host a fun contest for who could pick up the most trash at places like City Park, downtown Hagerstown, et cetera. When we would have prizes for winners to encourage more people to join. For example, one prize could be a gift card to local establishments in Hagerstown. Picking up this trash will make more of a change in our community. With that being said, we would also plant more plants in downtown Hagerstown to make it look greener and have fresher air. If I were mayor, I would make everyone feel part of the community by having a public hearing at our council meeting. We would discuss the events, we would discuss what events would make new people to Hagerstown feel more welcome. Along with that event we decided on, we should have, we could have a Hub City Festival where everyone could learn more about Hagerstown and what fun places and events we have to make new people feel like they are part of the community. After being mayor, I will make Hagerstown have a better impression on Maryland and everyone will feel part of the community.
What do you say as a group? Let's just move this way over. We get on, we get on.
Are you ready? Good?
Yeah. Be more certain. Okay, here we go. Good smiles. One, two, three, cheese. One, two, three, cheese. Okay, thank you.
There you go. Thanks, Cam. The parents, you should be very proud. The teachers should be very proud of these kids. That was one of the most, that was one of the best experiences I had as a mayor is sitting with these kids and listening to all their ideas. They were very respectful of each other, and they had a, they had a lot of great ideas. So I just want to let you know, you should be very proud. All right, we're gonna go ahead and you have your name tag. Now you're gonna take Oliver's voice, all right? And let's see. Alexander?
I'll be right here.
Cameron? Here?
That.
Me, though.
Also, parents, we want to let you know that it's the, the meeting's a little bit long tonight, so if you guys don't want to stay the whole time, you certainly can take your child with you and go ahead and cut out of here before you get bored to death. Next thing, one is not on our agenda either. I am going to ask Donna Spickler, come up here real quick, please. Donna is our city clerk. Donna holds us all in check. Donna makes my life and everybody else's life a lot easier, and this is her twenty-three years of service.
Come on, Donna.
Wait, we didn't, we didn't put it on the agenda because we knew she would say no.
One, three, and one, two, three.
Can you follow up for me exactly?
Think we should let, be careful trying to read a couple things on that.
Up to you. Yeah, absolutely. All right, you guys wanna?
I gotta do the preliminary agenda review next week. Do you want to help me read it? Okay, you wanna start with you? All right, all we do is, all you do is say, you would be first, call it, say, call it to order, the invocation. The first up next week? The first up next week, call it to order?
First up next week, call to order. In vocation, pledge your flag.
Okay. We'll also have announcements. Our rules and procedures effective December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in official record. Our meeting schedule for month of July is Tuesday, July first, twenty twenty-five. No meeting scheduled. Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty-five, work session at four P M. Tuesday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, is a work session at four P M. Tuesday, twenty, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, is a regular session at seven P M. Tuesday, July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, no meeting is scheduled. Can you read that? Say, next up is
Appointments, Hagerstown Youth Council Partner Group members.
Perfect. All right. Can you read one for me? Say, next up, agenda. I'm saying, I'm gonna read up there. Yep.
Agenda item, citizen comment. Citizen comments on agenda items shall be limited to topics listed for consideration on this agenda and limited to three minutes.
Real quick, just read it. Same minutes. Say, next up, maybe minutes.
Minutes. April first, twenty twenty-five, April eighth, twenty twenty-five, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. May sixth, twenty twenty-five, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Perfect. Can you read the next? Yeah, get him to the bar. I'll give you the other agendas. Yep. Yep. Okay, then we will have our consent agenda. Under Communications, a social media archiving contract, Civic Plus Dallas, Texas, ten thousand five hundred seventy dollars and seventy-seven cents. Under Engineering, we have miscellaneous architectural services contract, New Comer, Associates, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, and Murphy and Dittenhafer, Baltimore, Maryland. AutoCAD subscription renewal, D L T Solutions LLC, Herndon, Virginia, ten thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. Alley reconstruction, S F M S Incorporated, Bethesda, Maryland, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Under Fire, Relined Burn Building, H F D Training Center, W H P Training Towers, Grandview, Missouri, a hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Under Human Resources, Administration of Medical Coverage, United Healthcare, Chicago, Illinois, three hundred sixty-four thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars. Administration of Dental Coverage, United Concordia, Hunt Valley, Maryland, forty-four thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars. Stop-loss insurance annual premium, United Healthcare, Chicago, Illinois, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand sixty-eight dollars. City-sponsored life insurance, Hartford Life and Accident Insurance Company, Hartford, Connecticut, sixty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars. Workers' compensation, surety board bond renewal, Midwest Employers Casualty Company, Chesterfield, Missouri, thirty-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Workers' compensation, excess liability, Midwest Employers Casualty Company, Chesterfield, Missouri, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Workers' compensation, third-party administration, P M A Management Corp., Blue Bell, Pennsylvania, twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. Under Information Technology, we have V Tech Solution Incorporated, renewal of office three sixty-five licensed V Tech Solution Incorporated, Washington, D C, fifty-four thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-four cents. Under Inspections, we have weed, trash, and debris contract with Lawn Topia Group LLC, Thurmont, Maryland, fifty thousand dollars. Under Utilities, light repairs to unit one twenty-four, New Direction Utilities, Hagerstown, Maryland, thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and two cents. Underwater, we have R C Wilson, W T P, intake structure improvements, Hazen and Sawyer, Baltimore, Maryland, a hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. We have no unfinished business. New business, approval to amend doubt property annexation agreement, introduction of inordinance P U D R amendment for doubt property, introduction of inordinance prohibiting outdoor lodging, approval of a resolution, surety bond with Midwest Employers Casualty, approval of a resolution, Washington County Museum Fine Arts Lease Agreement, approval of a resolution, memorandum of understanding for school resource officers, approval of a resolution, F Y twenty-six Community Legacy Fund application, approval of a resolution, F Y twenty-six Strategic Demolition Fund application, approval of a resolution, subrecipient grant agreement for Main Street Startup Grant Program, approval of a memorandum of understanding special appropriation, state of Maryland water wastewater master plan study, approval of non-union pay scale, approval of H P D non-union pay scale, approval of F Y twenty-six on-call electrical maintenance services, approval of boiler services and maintenance, approval of H V A, excuse me, H V A C services and maintenance, approval of elevator maintenance services, approval of contractual services to assist with emergency storm restoration, approval of best Hagerstown program funding levels for F Y twenty-six, approval of lease holdover extension, Department of Labor Licensing and Regulation, fourteen North Potomac Street, approval of safe streets grant application, approval of community parks and playground grant request, F Y twenty-seven Wheaton Park Playground Equipment. And last is approval of a union contract, I B E W. Here, I got it. I got it. You got it? Yep.
General citizen comments. General citizen comments are welcome and shall be limited to three minutes. City administration comments, mayor and council comments, and adjournments.
Perfect, guys. Good job. There you go. Good job. Good job. All right, next up is community parks and playground grant request, FY2027 Wheaton Park Playground Equipment. Mr. Eric Dyke.
Good afternoon. Mayor requests an update to apply for Department of National Resources grant called Community Parks and Playground, or CPAP. The program is designed specifically for towns and municipalities of Maryland. I had this wrong in here. Counties are not available. This is one of the grants that they're not available for. It's a pretty competitive grant process. They have about $5 million to give away or to grant. And they'll get $10 to $15 million in projects. They just opened it up for fiscal year 27. So it takes them a year, even after you apply, to decide these things. So it's not even fiscal year 26, it's for the next fiscal year. What we decided to do was seek out funding of $170,000 or replace the playground equipment at Wheaton Park. I put in there the master plan. It came out a few years ago. The city has acted on a number of these projects, and soon we'll be building a new stage out there. This is just kind of continuation of improving out on that. So I just need your approval to seek the grant.
All right.
Thank you.
Still here, Washington County Museum of Fine Arts Lease Agreement.
The Washington County Museum of Fine Arts has an auction every year. They're seeking rental space to sort through their auction items. For the last 10 years, they've used a space that's no longer available, unfortunately. So they asked the city to create any space. We have retail space close by in the Elizabeth Hager Center, 14 North Potomac. It's about 1,400 square feet. They're asking to use it from August 1st through about mid-November. The rent would be $0, since it's a short period of time. And the city already, you know, supports the Museum of Fine Arts anyway. And so we have a lease agreement attached and a motion sheet and that sort of thing, so. Just making sure we're good with that.
I'm good with that. I'm good. All right.
Thank you.
Safe streets for all implementation of grant application.
Say Jim Bender.
Jim Bender.
Good afternoon. Last month, the council adopted the city's Safe Streets for All Action Plan, which kind of lays out a vision for how we can implement things here in the city to reduce or minimize the number of fatalities and serious injuries on our street network. And one of the main purposes of going through that exercise was to put us in position to actually apply for implementation funding to actually use some of those projects where identified in that plan. And so there is a funding opportunity that is open right now that would allow us to apply for implementation funding. The minimum request that the Federal Highway Administration has said that they'd like to see is somewhere in the range of $2 million to $2.5 million. And so what we're proposing is submitting a grant application that would ask for $2 million in federal funding. There's a 20% match increase. We would use 20, I'm sorry, we would use $500,000 of local funding as the match. And that funding has been incorporated into the FY27 city budget. So it is in the budget book. It's money that we've already sort of set aside to match this grant. So because this is a rather large commitment of funds, I just wanted to bring this to the council and give you an opportunity to, really, to authorize us going ahead with making this grant application.
Any questions for Jim? Good.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, you must stay here, but just gonna say something.
Next up, Salmon Avenue Railroad Crossing.
Okay, so also back in May, came to the council and made a presentation about the potential closure of the Salmon Avenue Railroad Crossing and laid out some of the pros and cons of what that closure would mean. And at that meeting, the council asked that staff go back out and redo a public survey to gauge what people's, you know, opposition or support for closing that crossing would be. So at the end of May, we distributed approximately 600 survey forms in the, mainly in the south end of Hagerstown. There's a map attached to the memo that shows the area where we distributed those survey forms. And people could either email in the responses. We got some, actually, snail mail responses, which we don't see very much anymore. And we also set up a QR code so that people could go onto the city's website and actually respond to this survey electronically. And, you know, very similar to the survey that we conducted in 2023, the responses that we got to the survey were pretty much split 50/50. We only received six, well, just less than 60 responses. 29 were in favor of closing the crossing, 27 opposed it. And in the memo, I sort of listed some of the, I guess, the talking points for both sides that we saw in the survey responses. One thing that, you know, in opposition, there were quite a few people that were concerned about shifting more traffic over to Park Circle. There's a perception that Park Circle is a dangerous intersection. So they were not necessarily comfortable that more traffic would be going through there. There was also some dissatisfaction with CSX that why isn't CSX fixing this? Because it's their crossing, why aren't they, why aren't they taking care of this? On the supporting side, what I saw was that people, people don't necessarily like the idea of closing Salmon Avenue, but they are willing to do it if it gets the other two crossings at Park Circle repaired. And really, that's, that's what CSX has, through this whole thing, has kind of said, if you close Salmon Avenue, we will remove the restrictions or the roadblocks on fixing those other two crossings. And I included some of the actual survey comments, just so you could get a sense of what people were saying as they responded to this.
I would have been there to get that. Might have been there to support a closure.
So a couple of things since then, a couple of updates. Just today, I had a meeting with both CSX and State Highway Administration to talk about this closure. They knew that I was coming to this meeting. And I confirmed with them that if the Salmon Avenue crossing is closed, the money to fix the other two crossings is still available and that CSX would facilitate actually moving ahead with getting those other, allowing State Highway to go ahead and fix those other two crossings. I also had a conversation with Columbia Gas. Columbia Gas had initially raised concerns about closing the Salmon Avenue crossing because it would impact access to their yard that's accessed now off of Sycamore Street. It has a secondary access off of Potomac Street that could be used, but it would have to be upgraded. And they have had conversations with the development company that is interested in doing the development down off of Sharpsburg Pike, the I-70 Gateway Project. And that developer asked Columbia Gas to come up with an estimate of the cost to make the improvements that are necessary. They have not executed any sort of an agreement, but Columbia Gas told me this afternoon that that's moving in a positive direction, and they don't really see any reason why that would not be approved by Columbia Gas. So I think from, from that standpoint, I think that that was kind of the key negative about closing the crossing because that would have impacted a business there. And I think that there, there is some solution to that that's out there. If the council decides to move ahead with closing the crossing, I'd recommend that it be done so with a couple of conditions. One is, there's going to be a cost to physically close the Salmon Avenue crossing. We'll have to remove pavement, we'll have to install curves, we'll have to do some other things. I think it's appropriate that the city be reimbursed for those costs by the, probably by the development company. And we've had conversations with them, and they said, yes, that's, that's something that they would, would enter into. Second condition would be that the development company enter into an annexation agreement or pre-annexation agreement so that if they do move ahead with their development on Sharpsburg Pike, it would be annexed into the city, and that would be property tax revenue that would flow into the city at some point instead of being a development that's out in Washington County. Third condition is that the concerns of Columbia Gas are addressed. And fourth condition is that CSX does free up those funds to fix the other two crossings at Park Circle. And I think that all four of those agreements, again, nothing has been put down on paper, but I feel that all four of those conditions are something that we'll be able to, or something that can be met. So really, I guess we're to the point where I'm looking for some direction from the council. Do we, do we move ahead with the process to actually close the Salmon Avenue crossing? Or do we say, no, we're not interested in closing the crossing?
So it's 100% that CSX will not repair the other two if we do not close that crossing?
They haven't, they haven't said that in those words, but the fact that the Walnut Street Crossing in particular has been in very poor condition for at least four or five years, and CSX has not done anything to address that situation, makes me think that eventually they may buckle and do that, but that's not their position right now.
The way that I understand it, though, CSX is not the entity that will repair, that will actually repair those crossings, right? Because railroad systems traditionally, historically, have greater exemptions because they have greater federal exemptions that they lobbied for decades ago, probably centuries ago at this point, because they were the first there. In other words, they were there before the roads were there. So they get autonomy, right, to be exempt from having to fix their crossings at roads because the road is in their way, not vice versa, right?
That's.
Right?
The president.
They lobbied the feds early on in life, got the exemption, they were there first. The way that this reads, MDOT will actually be the entity that is repairing it. CSX is simply saying, yes, if you do this, we'll let somebody else pay to fix those crossings that were responsible.
My understanding, and this gets, this gets a little fuzzy because of federal, because of the railroad requirements, but my understanding is that MDOT has the money to repair the crossings. They will do the design for the improvements that need to be done. I have a feeling, just knowing the railroad and their union requirements, that the people physically doing the work are probably going to be CSX employees.
I'm sure they'll be doing the work.
Yeah.
I don't know that CSX would be footing the bill.
No, CSX.
Right.
CSX will not be footing the bill, is my understanding.
Because they have this federal exemption. So how will the homes, and I know it's only a couple of homes, but I guess one of the most pointed comments in the responses we got from citizens now and in the past is that the homes along Summit, that's one, well, it's two-way, but I'm just trying to figure out how logistically you're going to get around to those, to those three or four houses that are there.
So those properties can be accessed from Sycamore Street, which was coming over. They can come in the backside. Excuse me.
I guess you could wrap around, yeah, or put the street in the back.
You could do that. They can also, let's say you're coming, you're coming home to one of those houses and you're on Virginia Avenue. You can come up Virginia Avenue to Lee Street, turn right.
Yeah.
And turn down Hood Street and get to the rear of those properties. And so you would, those properties, in some cases, would have to loop around the block.
Right, Hood Street's going to be their primary access from the south for now.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jim? And public safety and utilities are completely fine with this.
They said that they can, they can make this work. They didn't see that as a big hindrance to their response times.
I'm just wondering, there's no other way we could go around getting these, the other two CSX railroads repaired without having to force this deal? There's just no other way around it? Like, based on the merit fact that they need repair, you can't just move off of that?
It's, I mean, my experience has been it's difficult to force the railroads to do anything. Now, I think if the city, if the city would agree to fund in full all the improvements at those other two crossings, then I'd, CSX may be willing to do that.
As reimbursements.
Yeah, but I, I think that, I think that the most likely way that those crossings get repaired is that Salmon Avenue Crossing is closed, and MDOT uses the money that they already have programmed to affect those repairs.
I can't help but feeling like we're being held a bit hostage.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree.
They were there first.
And what is the response time? I'm sorry.
That's all right.
When do they need the response, the final response?
Well, they didn't give me a, they didn't, I'll put it this way. State Highway did not give me a deadline date, but they've been holding this money for, I'd say, six years, seven years. And they call monthly at least to say, what's the status? So I think they are under pressure. It's, it's federal money that's passing through the state. I think they are under pressure from the federal government to, are you going to use this money? Or are we going to claw it back and use it for some other transportation project? So I think that's why they were on the call today, because they are very interested in, are we, are we moving forward on this or not? Because I, I get the sense that if we, if we don't move, that money is going to evaporate at some point.
And they're holding how much money?
I think when I saw the, and this was from six or seven years ago, I want to say it's in the neighborhood of $150,000.
Anything else for Jim? So I have to choose whether or not I want to take what is effectively $6 out of the average property owner's pocket of taxes to keep that open, right? I mean, that's what I'm, right? Because if they don't do it, we could go, we could say, here's your $150,000, go fix the two, and we're going to keep the third one open. And what that would mean is that would cost every property owner in the city about $6 or $7 out of their pocket to actually have to do it from the city's own money.
I'd say that is correct with the one caveat that CSX would have to approve.
Right, they would have to still say yes.
Yeah.
Right?
And that's the, to me, that's kind of the wild card.
Because the politics associated with that behind the scenes is using our net.
Right.
And that's the reality.
And I think that they do have a, in CSX's one, they do have a safety consideration because the Salmon Avenue Crossing is the least protected of those three crossings, your park, Park Circle.
Because they'd have to pony out money to make that more safe.
Yep.
Because it doesn't have the. Anything else for Jim?
So I guess what I would do then is I will, I will put forward a motion next week for regular session. I think the motion's going to say, yes, we want to, we want to move ahead with closing this crossing with these conditions. And I'll lay out those conditions, and then I guess at that point it's up to the council to vote on them.
He's right. All right, perfect.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim.
Oh, yeah, okay, never mind. All right, hey, Nancy, before you go, I want to get, we have one more, we have one more special recognition for a Karen Mountain student. Can you come up? Oliver. Mr. Oliver Dobbins. I'm gonna put you right here beside the council now. Are you keeping the law? You keep quiet.
Oh. If I were a mayor, I would make Hagerstown better for the future. I would hope make housing for those in need by turning a building. I would hope make housing for those in need by turning and building abandoned, the building bit, abandoned buildings into affordable homes. Also, I would like to provide plenty of food and water for those in need. I want more police officers to keep the people safe and prevent crime. As mayor, I would want more funding for the parks to help create fun spaces for all to enjoy. I would make keeping trash off the ground a priority and clean graffiti off walls. This would make Hagerstown look better and look more welcoming. If I were a mayor, my goal would, my goal would be to make people feel like they're a part of Hagerstown. I would encourage local kids to create art, create art and add another art museum to display the artwork, but the artwork is kids' art. I would get the funding for these changes by asking for donations. I would hold a personal meeting to create a budget and ask for money for the art museum. I encourage council meetings with the public to hear about the community needs. I think it's important for people to have a say about the laws of their town. I would like to improve the laws to make Hagerstown a better place for everyone. If I were mayor, I would make Hagerstown a better place for the future. I would like to help people feel like they're a part of the community of Hagerstown. I would make Hagerstown the best place it could ever be.
Everybody come back up. Oliver, keep them up. We're going to take a picture. Any rest of you, welcome up to the.
Yeah. Okay, here we go. One, two, three, cheese. One more. One, two, three, cheese. Thank you.
All right. Next up, memorandum of understanding, special appropriation grant for water, wastewater master plan study.
Hi, Nancy. Good evening, everybody. And I'd like to say to all of you guys, you did an amazing job. So impressive. So in the Maryland General Assembly and their fiscal 2025 bill identified $250,000 for the city of Hagerstown in the form of a grant to help offset the cost of comprehensive water and wastewater master plan. Like any other master plan, our, this master plan will look at a 20-year planning window. It'll include the development of all pipe hydraulic models for water and wastewater. We need to update, do some major updates to the existing GIS mapping, in particular the, the water needs a fair amount of work. And all of the projects that are identified will be prioritized so that we make sure that the current demands as well as future demands within the respective systems, water and wastewater, will be met. And of course, that will, you know, be in our defined service area. This will tie into the water resource element in our comp plan as well as some other documents or policies that are in place. Included in your packet is the MOU as well as a motion. Essentially, the state, once the RFP is awarded, we'll submit an invoice, we'll see, receive one lump sum payment from the state, and then we'll submit the, the heart of the plan, the recommendations of the plan, back to the state. They don't need the entire document. It'll be a massive document, of course. So that's kind of the, the grant in a nutshell. And the RFP is written, we're tweaking the final section on GIS. I'm going to make sure we have that as correct as we can and then it will be ready to be advertised. So I need to, we, I need to electronically sign the MOU, so there'll be a motion next week authorizing that. But I would ask if your permission to, if it would be okay to go ahead and sign it because the state also needs to get this on their June agenda and that would give them an extra week to do so. So with your permission, I would sign it and send it off tomorrow and then we would formal motion next week.
Same with stormwater, right?
No, this is water and wastewater, only stormwater's a different program.
Okay. I'm fine with it. Any questions?
Are we good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up. Invest Hagerstown program funding levels for FY 26.
So I am here to seek determination of funding levels for the Invest Hagerstown program for fiscal year 2026. After, as the program, the current total amount of $705,000 is available for fiscal year 2026, which runs from July 1st of this year until June 30th of next. With the motion to establish a chart of components, this will allow us to start spending money and start approving applications starting July 1. Inside your packet, we have attached a couple of charts that go over the funding levels and suggested options for how we can establish those funds. Option one, that's in front of you, would provide additional business owner and property redevelopment support, whereas option two would basically put the funds towards three additional down payment assistance program application instead. So we're trying to seek determination and mayor council direction so we can start getting this ready for July 1st fiscal year. Once this has been approved by mayor and council, sorry, the direction has been approved, we'll bring it back to regular session next week with the motion updated accordingly.
Any questions for Chris on that one?
You're asking us to select an option?
Yes, sir.
Right now, right?
My preference is option two. However, I will say at the end of the day, I think you'll be back here eight months from now saying, here's the money that's left. You know what I mean? Put the remains. That's, that's my opinion.
Right. And I will say that it is review committee practice essentially today that anytime there is a forfeiture, sorry, not forfeiture, but a payoff, whereas a individual does not do their five-year residency, that funds will go right back into the down payment system program versus being reallocated across programs as well.
Anybody else?
Chris, you're going, sorry, Councilmember Asha, you're going with one or two?
My preference is option two. That's just me.
Any specific reasonings on why you guys set up the two options this way? Is this something that you saw last term and then that's what made you reconsider allocating the funds in this?
So it goes off of how the prior conversations have been on priorities for mayor and council. We do know that there's been a large priority for, when it comes to homeowner support as well as using part of the funds from Invest Hagerstown to support the home program FY 26 contribution. So we're just trying to balance the Invest Hagerstown priorities of small business, property redevelopment, apartment unit upgrades, I don't know those lines, with that down payment homeownership assistance.
Any other questions for Chris? Okay, we agreed on when to go with option two?
I'm fine with that.
Everybody good? Councilmember, you doing with that?
Yes.
Okay. So we will update our motion for next week and we'll bring that back for the vote.
Appreciate it, Chris.
Thank you.
Stay here. Subrecipient grant agreement for Main Street Startup Grant Program.
So, similar to, in the past, we are here to perform two additional recommendations for the Main Street Startup Grants from the Main Street Startup Grant Review Committee. This is funded, once again, by Project Restore Funding from the state of Maryland's Department of Community and Housing Development, oh, sorry, Department of Housing Community Development, DHCD. The two recommendations in front of you are for Juniper Cafe over at the former Delharmay Guild space at 41 North Potomac Street, as well as Summit Offitters over at 101, yes, 101 Summit, or a, there you go, trace that. Juniper Cafe would be a southern and northeastern cafe, more of a breakfast and brunch space with opportunities for evening dinners in the, in the future. And Summit Offitters is a outdoor REI-type clothing and outdoors boutique that they're going to be having at that order.
I'm glad they made it here, please.
Any questions? Everybody good?
With the other ones, they'll be ready for the official vote for next week to give us the authorization entered into that subrecipient agreement the state requires. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
5:50 PM. Review, review of lease holdover extension, Department of Labor licensing and regu, regulation. 14 North Potomac Street.
So here tonight to review a holdover extension, this will actually be the sixth holdover extension with the state of Maryland's Department of Labor Licensing and Regulation for six, 2 to 6 North Potomac Street. They're currently leasing a little over 11,000 square feet from the city. So this term would actually begin August 1st, 2025, and run through January 31st, 2026. The current lease, lease rate is $15 a foot or $167,100 per year. The state and the city have been acting in good faith throughout that, the holdover extension periods. So here tonight to review the holdover letter that was provided in your packet and the draft motion for the sixth extension with the state of Florida. Okay with the draft motion, we'll come back next week at the regular session for a vote.
Any questions for Doug on that?
We didn't have any other interests, right, for this property as far as leasing?
No, we have, they're current tenants, so we haven't been actively soliciting any interest from other tenants. They've been, this was a 2007 original lease, so they've been with us for quite some time now.
I'm fine with it, Doug.
I'm fine with it.
I'm good.
Thanks, Doug.
Follow up on amendment. Annexation, Dub Farm, Stephen Bachmiller, Deputy Director for Planning and Zoning Administration.
Thank you very much. Members of the council, mayor, assistant mayors, we're here to talk about the recent public hearing on the Dub Farm Annexation, but before I do, I have a couple of really quick introductions for you. I want to introduce you first to Zivia Schwartz. Zivia is our student intern for the summer. She's a recent graduate of South Hagerstown High School and she's looking to go into urban planning. So she wanted to get some hands-on experience before she goes to school over in the Philadelphia area, I believe, later this summer, so she'll be with us through early August. So she's either going to fall in love with planning or disabuse herself of the notion, one or the other. So also, wanted to introduce to you all Christian Broche, who had came on board with the city on Monday. He is our new staff planner, replacing Joanna Wu, who left to move to Illinois back in May. So Christian's on board here, starting to staff the department back up. So, okay, in front of you, we actually have a two-step process when the, when your agenda, the adjustments to the annexation agreement was listed as first, but I'm going to move to the rezoning because depending on what you do with the rezoning, the, dealing with the annexation agreement becomes more or less of a priority at that point. You had a public hearing on the annexation a few weeks ago. The plan that you see on the, on the screen is the, was the latest version that was submitted to the city as part of the process. What we have, what's in front of you today is a discussion on what to do with that annex, not annexation, excuse me, zoning overlay, whether or not you want to approve it, approve it with certain conditions, remanded to the planning commission and the applicant expecting certain changes to be made before you're willing to consider approving it, or just flat denying it. There are basically three elements that are your role in this process. One is, does the proposal meet the specific performance standards called out in the Land Management Code? And attached to that memo in your packet, I produced for you a beginnings of a draft, findings of fact, in which I embedded all of those specific criteria, so it kind of gives us a template to work from as you address each item. Second, are the zoning constraints being proposed? Lot sizes, building setbacks, mixed abuses, maximum building heights acceptable? And then three is the general layout and design of the development acceptable? So that's where we're at. You had a public hearing. Because this is a hearing process in which there is a, a record which has now been closed, the role of the body is also to make a decision based on the material that is in the record. So, not exactly sure how you want to proceed with this. If you want, I could walk you through the findings of fact by an item and obtain feedback from you all to put into it as your official response. How would you want to move forward on that? That's about I walked you through, right then?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. The first page on the, on the draft findings is all basically just setup material. Number one is the proposed area for a planned unit development shall be under one ownership or have permission of all the owners. That's been addressed. The site shall be a size and a shape suitable to the develop, for the development proposed. Property is 100 acres and roughly rectangular in shape. I don't think there's any issue there. Three, the site is or can be served with public water and wastewater facilities. Public water and wastewater facilities shall be required in all PUDs. That's kind of a given. We're not going to have a townhouse development in the city that's not on public water and so or so. That would be subject to availability like any other development. Number four, the site shall be located adjacent to or adequate, adjacent to adequate highway facilities capable of serving the existing traffic and that expect, that expected to be generated by the proposed development as well as create exposure for commercial elements of the PUD. Opportunities for adjusting local public transportation service to the development should be explored by the developer. This particular development actually fronts on Interstate 70 and the off-ramp from 70 on the dual highway. The road network that was, that will be built into it because of the size and scale of it, the entry roads will end up being collector roads. So the wording is the site shall be located adjacent to adequate highway facilities capable of, of serving existing traffic and that expected to be generated. As long as it builds out in accordance with the requirements of the state highway administration and the county and the city, there should be no issue. Five, the owners or developers must indicate they plan to begin construction on the development within three years after a final approval. And then we omitted the rest of that citation for brevity. They're looking to get development moving on this. If this is to be approved, we expect development sketch plans and development plans to be submitted for phase one pretty quickly. Then we move on to section J1F of the zoning ordinance regarding the concept plan. Concept plan is the plan that's shown on the screen. Concept plan, in addition to the basic intent of the concept plan is to find an Concept plan, in addition to the basic intent of the concept plan is defined in Article 3, "For the purpose of a PUD district, the concept plan is a generalized, nonspecific plan that shows the general intent of the layout and arrangement of development in what is generally known as a bubble plan format. It allows developer to obtain approval of the zoning overlay provided by the PUD without having to invest detailed engineering studies or other expensive services. The concept plan shall include the following information: generalized development layout." They have that. Actually, it's more detailed than our ordinance would technically require. "Generalized reservation of parks, pathways, playgrounds, school sites, delineated 100-year floodplain, anticipated forest conservation areas, and other open spaces. And the location of any human burial sites identified as a result of research required by Article 5, Section K." On that one, I know that there was some discussion by the, by this body at a previous meeting about open space. That's something that you may want to have a discussion about. Steph would only point out that when it comes to these PUDs that are intended to be dense, so the idea of open space is very flexible. It could actually even include hardscape areas in front of, if you have a Main Street design into the development, amenities built into the streetscape of the, of that commercial strip. So when we think of open space, we're not just thinking trees and ball fields. We're thinking any sort of publicly accessible open space which could be either hard or soft escapes. But with that, I'm thinking, do you want to have some conversation on that? Because I know that's been a concern prior.
I mean, it kind of goes back to what we mentioned before. We don't see much of that, even in this depiction here.
I believe there's a requirement that there's supposed to be at least 10% of the site is to be open space. That comes up on page four of the report. And one of the things that the applicant puts in their proposal is that some of that open space would be in the multifamily area, but that's part of phase two. And one of the concerns that staff and the planning commission had is, once phase one gets developed, there's, might not be a motivation to develop phase two or the financial motive because of the road situation. So, what this, what they're proposing here relies on the phase two being built in order to meet the minimum requirement for the overall PUD. If that doesn't get built, not only are they in violation of the PUD, but they're also in violation of the open space requirement of the PUD.
I think that the primary objective of a PUD, I'll say this again, if a developer wants to develop the property for residential or commercial uses, through the general process that affords them that ability to do so, they could simply go through the planning commission process and they could provide a development proposal that meets the requirements of those things that are simply permitted to be developed on that property and not have to come to this body.
Right.
If a developer wants to develop the property with residential and/or commercial under the special provisions of the PUD, which offers flexibilities, then the product that they should produce that provides that flexibility they gain from it could also be a gain to the city. It shouldn't be that you get to get the special consideration for a more dense development so that you can add more density because you're getting a more dense development. It should be that the density of that development is shrunk down, right, on tighter lots, in tighter spaces, and intertwined with one another so that more of the green space around and within that development is preserved. That isn't what is happening here. This proposal, as you can see on the board, simply says, "I'm going to create all the density I can on as much of the parcel as I'm allowed so that I get as much more density as I'm able, and then you, city, will get the remnants of the green space that isn't usable for anybody." So when I see a bunch of green lines on here that are in and between townhouses, that simply says somebody can get a 10-foot slot to get their mower behind the townhouse to mow the backyard, right, because they can't get through, that shouldn't be green space. None of that should count anywhere close to green space. If they've got to plant 500 trees on this property, right, because of the development for fro, none of that should be included. No stormwater management, the steep slopes they can't use, because none of that green space is usable to anybody, and it simply will look exactly like that. It'll just be remnants of a property that was given special consideration to just be more dense because it's been given the ability to simply be more dense. And I guess that's what I think we should absolutely try to avoid here, is if you want a PUD, you want those special considerations, you better bring in a really creative design that accommodates the attributes of why you're getting that special consideration in the first place.
So Steph's question to you all is, how do we frame that? Do we say that the open space that is shown is inadequate for the number of units and density?
Yeah, I mean, you only need to look at one spot on this entire design to see that, and that's the green space up on the left corner that's on both sides of a major thoroughfare. And it's like you're giving us two triangles of property because you couldn't frame a house on it that isn't usable for anybody to recreate on at all.
You mean Councilmember Alshires' rec? I had to cut my grass when I was at a Dan Ryan building, and I had to actually walk way down the street and find an open space where I could actually put the lawnmower in and cut my backyard. And that's my concern as well, so.
Yeah, that shouldn't be what we expect.
Yeah, I agree.
Understood. And just so we're clear on process, when it comes to townhouse developments, we do have a requirement in the zoning ordinance that a rear of a townhouse opens up either to an alley or to open space. That way, if you're in your backyard and your house catches fires, let's say as an extreme example, that you don't have to trespass onto somebody else's property to get out of your backyard. So that is, keep in mind that those strips are required by ordinance, but I'm not arguing that it should be considered part of usable open space. I don't know. Okay. So, Steph will provide you some sort of language that explains that this body believes that the configuration of open spaces and the improvement of open spaces insufficient?
Yes.
And also, you want me to add something in there about it also relies on open space proposals as part of phase two, which we question will be built? You okay with that as well?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to the next one, generalized locations of residential uses, non-residential uses and mixed-use areas within the PUD, the location of commercial areas and the listing of those uses that are to be permitted in the PUD development as found among those uses in the PUD chart. That is basically just describing them, so that's kind of really, really need to make a finding there. Types, general locations, and approximate numbers of dwellings and portions of the area proposed there. Therefore, that is provided. A tabulation of the total number of bakers in the proposed project and the percentage of those designated for each, they have provided. Keep in mind that these are like, either you got them or you don't kind of things associated with the exhibit itself. We'll get into more detailed ones a little bit later here. Generalized elevations of dwellings and commercial buildings, that was provided for the town, for the houses, the towns, and the mixed-use buildings, not for anything that was freestanding. We can provide that comment. Okay, moving on to special design requirements. Regional streetscape focal point and mixture of residential uses. A PUDR overlay shall have as its focus a mixed-use traditional Main Street carter consisting of mixed-use buildings, three or more stories in height, that include residential uses utilizing minimal setbacks and mixture of green and hardscape open space amenities, rear-load parking, and such other design features as may accomplish this design expectation. The planning commission and the mayor and council may consider a design that contains this feature only on one side of a streetscape, if necessary, only to accommodate the unique site constraints of a property proposed for this form of development. However, the proposed design is a two-sided urban mixed-use streetscape, and the one-side option shall be applied only when it's clearly shown that two-sided mixed-use streetscapes cannot be achieved due to site limitations and not created by developer intent or choice. They have provided a alternate central focal point, being the central green that runs through the middle of the development. That is not real consistent with the language in the ordinance. Again, this kind of gets back to a little bit of, the ordinance was written to be flexible, to encourage flexibility, but sometimes when you write something flexible, you get flexible proposals that you didn't anticipate. But the intent was that there was a streetscape focal point that included a mixture of uses. What's your finding on this?
Now, I mean, clearly the uses are secular, and you have your, your token, a few single-family homes cordoned off in one segment. You have your majority of townhouses ordered together, and then you have, you know, your mixed use separated and placed, you know, within the commercial. There's, there's nothing that flows that doesn't, when I look at this piece of paper, say, "I've got to get in a car and drive somewhere else in my neighborhood to get to another place I probably want to go." The intent of the PUD, especially in an area like this, is that those things are supposed to be intertwined with one another, no differently than you might find, you know, in, in a traditional neighborhood that came about that way organically, but you're trying to sort of recreate here.
Housing types, single-family, semi-detached townhouse, and apartment dwelling shall be mixed and not segregated into individual pods. An exception can be made when it's necessary to transition effectively to existing surrounding development in accordance with six below. That would be kind of like the single-family homes there, because there are single-family homes across land, so you don't want to impact the neighbors, but.
So, yeah.
But, yeah, Steph would suggest to you that you got your townhouse section, you got your single-family section, you got your apartment section, is it integrated?
Yeah.
I'm hearing that it, that's a no.
No.
Open space, open space shall be so located and designed to complement the development and serve as an amenity to the development. Common open spaces shall comprise not less than 10% of the total gross area. Character divining open space in the form of hardscape areas in the RSFP that are available to all residents and visitors shall be included in meeting the minimum 10% requirement. That's where I, I get that part about how, keep in mind, open space does not necessarily mean grass.
Right.
But in this case, the open space shall be located and designed to complement the development and serve as an amenity to the development, common area, common open space shall comprise not less than 10%. Technically, they do appear to meet the 10%, even if you take out those strips, but then the question becomes is, does this body view the open space proposal in common areas?
We don't see that as usable.
Usable or an amenity.
What is this big, long, blue strip right here?
Stormwater management.
So every kid in the neighborhood that wants to use green space is going to have to walk through the stormwater management facility to get to the meeting.
To the passive recreation area.
Yeah, like, it doesn't even make sense.
It's not usable.
So I can either play in the middle of this strip of grass in the main thoroughfare, I can play up here on either side of this busy road, or I can walk through the stormwater management area to play.
Swim.
Right, right. Swim to play in this.
Okay. Sounds like a big, big no there.
Right.
Okay. Next item, forest retention and reforestation required to meet terms of Article 7 may be included as part of the required open space, provided it is not located in floodplains or other residual areas. And that wooded area is included in the Conferences Strategy for Recreation and Aesthetics Within Development. Sounds like that's part of your concern in the last one, is that it's not usable, it's segregated off. Is that, would be my understanding of your viewpoint on that?
Yes.
And remove. D, such open space shall include land area to be developed as recreational areas or which is designed for the common use of all occupants and visitors. I think we're getting the same.
Repetitive.
Repetitive there. Okay, so we'll craft some language there. Open space shall, open space also should provide for the preservation of significant natural features on the land and/or provide recreational amenities for the use of residents and development. Planning commission must be furnished with satisfactory evidence as a condition of approval for such open space will be continued and that potential maintenance is provided for. The last part of that, that's just part of the land development process under the planning commission. But the first part is, should provide for the preservation of significant natural features on the land. There really aren't any here. It's just rolling corn, cornfield. There are a couple of stands of trees, but they're, they're scrub, and they're not really worth protecting. So, I think that, again, that gets back to being repetitive and just we can restate the previous.
Did we have findings for our transportation, like the roadways, or no? Did we have that in here?
Um, that's not a specific requirement, but that could come under one of those other criteria. Are you okay with the layout, that kind of thing? Staff would encourage you to stick with things associated with the area shown on the plan and not get into details of off-site road improvements, because that's really best regulated by the county, if it's a county road, state highway, if it's a state road, et cetera. Also, like, one of the things that came up in public comment and was mentioned by this body, the school capacity, the city does not have an adequate public facilities ordinance for schools, and staff would encourage you not to include that in any sort of decision because you have no legal standard by which to measure it. Maximum allocation of commercial and residential uses. The intent of a PUDR overlay is to be predominantly non-residential and mixed use in char, non-residential and mixed use in character and land use. While this section, section does not establish a minimum or maximum percentage of land that shall be allocated for commercial or residential use, the planning commission shall not recommend and the mayor and council shall not approve a PUDR overlay that is not predominantly non-residential and mixed use in nature. So the question becomes, what is your non-residential and mixed use? Your non-residential is this industrial area here and the areas along the road and off the dual highway, because that's apartments, and then the commercial was represented to us as being they were going to be mixed-use buildings with, I'm sorry, the apartments are going to be mixed-use apartments over top of first-floor commercial, and then these areas down here would be more commercial use. So the question becomes to this body, does this plan, is it predominantly commercial and mixed use, or is it predominantly residential? If you find that it's predominantly residential, it does meet the requirement.
Well, if I recall correctly, the applicant was making the assertion that it was predominantly non-residential because they were applying what would eventually be the assessable value, right? So it could be that 35% of this property is going to be developed in a non-residential nature, but because of its assessment, having a higher, you know, tax assessment than what the total home value. I mean, so for me, I need to understand whether or not we're talking about the geographic nature of the design, or we're talking about the assessable base of the design, because...
I've never known a land use, mixed use issue like this being determined on assessable base.
Well, then it's clearly more primarily residential.
Yeah. It, it's based on the proposed land uses. The land uses are those color-coded charts, and it's your determination to make whether or not it's predominantly mixed use and non-residential or predominantly the other way.
Geographically, it's clearly more residential, but here's the catch-22. We don't live in an era of when we created the PUD, where, I mean, you have shopping stations, I mean, everybody buys online, everybody buys and has things delivered. So I just, I look at that requirement with the PUD, and I have to sort of side a little more with the developer and say, "Do you need another 500,000 square feet of commercial in this area? You know, does it support that?"
Right.
And I think, I think whether this proposal were to proceed or not, or any other proposal, I think we have to go back and revisit the PUD and, and evaluate, you know, why we want more geographically inherent commercial space.
And I want to disagree with you. Part of this, because this is the first PUD that's come through under these provisions, it's been a learning experience, and there are a few things that we've identified as staff that maybe we think when we do our next package of text amendments, we need to go back and make some adjustments on this, but these are the regulations that are in place right now that are being entertained. Now, it's, it's a subjective question, and it's up to you all to make your determination on that. But I'm not, just, I want to point out, I'm not disagreeing at all with Councilmember Alshire. We think there are some adjustments that do need to be made, but in the short term, these are the regulations that are on the books, and you'll need to make your determination accordingly.
Now, with the volume of townhouses, it's clearly more residential. Now, with the volume of townhouses, it's clearly more residential.
Okay. And then compatibility with neighboring developments. The perimeter of infill PUD developments shall be considered, shall consider neighboring developments and establish building patterns with regard to use, density, street orientation, and landscaping. This, I think, it's not an issue. They've actually put single-family homes up against where they're facing other singles. So I don't think that's an issue here.
I want you to reread that first part, though.
Okay.
Because I think this gets to Councilmember Anderson's question about transportation. Because the second half of what you've read clearly speaks to, are we building things in a neighborhood as a PUD where the like things are adjacent to other like things already there? Like, like, the first part of that question appears to me to ask, you know, not just are we building like things against or next to one another, but we are clearly, when you review this PUD, you can't help but look at this and say, "Well, we are, but we're able to do so because we're disrupting the fabric of how this transportation network flows now and will flow once it's complete." There's no way you can look at this and say, "Well, you're going to, you're going to cut," was it Day Road? You're going to cut that off to accomplish this, and you're going to disrupt the fabric of that existing neighborhood for the owners of unlike properties on both sides of that existing road. And that's where I think the transportation part comes in because in that first part of what you read, that appears to be, appears to be to me what you're also asking. You know, how is this development going to disrupt the fabric of the existing neighborhood? Or how's it going to be in concert with it? And when I look at that transportation change, you know, yeah, that is something that has to happen at the end of the day, but it's clearly changing it. And I don't know that that's what is shown here. I don't know that that's what was originally envisioned.
As it applies to Day Road, keep in mind that Day Road will be shortened so that there'll be fewer properties that access Day Road. So the traffic on Day Road will go down. But it's the road that would obviously be impacted is Landis Road, especially if phase two does not get built, where you end up with 400 houses accessing off of Landis Road. As far as the volumes and stuff, staff would encourage you to reserve that for the land development portion of the project if the zoning was to go forward because this county's road engineers, the state highway administrations are the ones who are best equipped to address those particular things. The new road coming in, if this is to be approved with a new road coming in, will provide the second point of access and pull a lot of that traffic off of Landis Road. But that is, if that gets built, and that's always been the concern.
But the county folks aren't going to be the ones that make the decision to cut Day Road in half. We are at this table. And that would be a permanent disruption that we created this table by approving a plan of this type.
Understood. I would, I would suggest if I lived on Day Road closer up to Landis Road, I would look at that as a good disruption because there's fewer properties on my street.
Yeah, I didn't get that impression from the folks that spoke at the meeting.
Okay. So those are the walkthrough items. Do you have any specific comments that you want to make on the, as part of this, as far as just the general layout, general comments on of why you're going to have a negative decision on this now that we've walked through the specific ordinance criteria? We've dealt with, number one on the item on the, on the list, does, does it meet this performance, specific performance standards? Two and three, do you have any just other comments, direction? If they're good, if they're amenable to coming back with a revised plan, what do you want to see in that plan?
I don't.
Okay. What's the body? Want to be quiet on that?
No.
Okay. Okay. Then with that, the issue associated with the annexation agreement is kind of not a priority at the moment, so we can put that off until another time. Okay. Thank you for your time. I know this is a little bit on the lengthy side. And we are going to be looking at ways of improving these criter, these criterias when we move forward now that we've had one project. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You have one more.
You got one more.
You have one more.
Steve, you got one more?
Yeah.
All right. I'm just going to, before you go on, I'm going to take a little short timeout.
Okay.
If any parents want to go ahead and pick their child, because they might be a little bored. Can you go ahead and do it?
Thank you.
That's worth staying for.
All right. Next up is the FI 26 Community Legacy and Strategic Demolition Fund applications.
Okay, this is a program that comes around this time every year. And we had consulted with Jill and Amanda and all the folks who typically have been part of this process in the past, seeing that we're kind of in a little bit of an upheaval here with the reorganization, want to make sure we didn't miss anybody. But the window is now open for the community development grant program at the state level. Grant applications are due July 2nd this year. Staff has identified three projects that we should apply to the state for funding for. All of them are through the Community Legacy Program. One is for middle neighborhood emergency home repair program. This targets moderate-income households with assistance of emergency home repairs such as roofing and HVAC systems. It requires a one-to-three match. And staff recommends a, that we request $150,000. The second is the Strategic Properties Program. This would serve as a targeted priority project grant fund to contribute for redevelopment of very challenging buildings and other large or underutilized properties in the sustainable community area. The funds would help with the acquisition, development costs such as architectural and engineering services and renovation costs. And there would be a developer match. And staff recommended amount of request is 500,000. And then lastly is the daycare startup assistance grant. This provides funding for obtaining a daycare certificate from the state, which can include home improvements and safety installations, assist in attracting new daycare services and expand current daycare services in the city. There is developer match required as well. And staff recommends that we seek $250,000 on that one. So we're looking for your feedback and go ahead to make these applications.
I'm good with all of them.
I'm good with it.
These were just like the max?
It's not the max we apply it for, but we also need to realize we need to be reasonable in our request because it's a competitive thing, and if you overask, it might not get.
Yeah.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move forward then. Thank you.
Next up, after-school program funding reallocation. Eve Kifer and Ashley Rousch.
I'm actually super impressed that you got my last name right. No one does, so that was perfect. So we're just coming to you for some advisement on some of our program funding. Every year, the housing authority comes in and asks for after-school program funding for their Parkside Pal's Homework Club program. That's the one down at the Summons Avenue Community Center. As you notes, the end of the fiscal year, they were closing out their books, realized that they had some leftover money in staffing and are just requesting that that be changed to the supply line item. So we just wanted to come to you. It's roughly $4,968 that we're requesting be moved from staffing to supplies. If approved, they're going to use that supply funding to very quickly go buy new tables and chairs for the program to continue to use. That's it.
I am fine.
Yep.
Good.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Administrator?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Alshire?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Flaherty?
Nothing for me.
Councilman Anderson?
One thing for me. Thank you to all the little mayors that came out. I missed all of your essays. I'll go back and re-watch the tape, don't worry. But you guys were impressive, and who knows? We might have a mayor in the room today. And that's all I have.
Same here. I really appreciate all the parents and students come out and put their input in here. I also got a chance to attend the Axon Road Show and the police department out at Fairgrounds yesterday. And the police showed me all of the technology that they utilize, seeing the drone, how the drones fly around the city and seeing how the body cams and the, all our cameras throughout the city operate and are all tied in together was, it was really pretty cool. So I just want to thank the police department for showing me that.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Wear a jern.
Thank you, Mayor McPartman. Thank you.